With the residents and given us a chance to have the interaction. We always start with the with the poster sessions and coffee, a chance to mingle. And then what we'll do tonight then is, as we always do, is open up the floor for questions, comments, any kind of discussion relative to the city. So, and these are important for council members to have meetings like this. Because this is one of the means of communication that we have. And it's always a challenge for particularly for local government to communicate directly with the residents. We do have our newsletters that go out throughout the year. We have these two town hall meetings. And of course, we have our city council meetings twice a month. So, we cherish the opportunities to have this interaction. So, thank you everyone for being here. So, just to kind of start off from a city's perspective. You know, there's been, you know, you don't see everything that's going on in a city. And for those that are involved on commissions, you can understand that. Lot of lot of projects take time and take a lot of interactions with staff, with community members, with, you know, property owners. And a lot of times, the public doesn't see things till they show up in the end. And it's it's hard to appreciate just the work that goes into these projects sometimes. And it's something that we are doing more and more often. Our projects are getting a little more involved. Lot more interaction with different government agencies, different stakeholders. So, so again, welcome. And we're just gonna go right into introductions. So, I'm Mayor Voss. I'm Steve Voss. I've been your mayor for seven years now. And our council members, I think you know, Jack Davis at the helm here keeps everything nice and steady. But what we also have here, I'm gonna recognize first, is we have some local elected officials. And I'll start with State Representative Cal Barr. If you'd like to come up and say a few words and take some questions for the audience. Right at the podium.
Okay, so I think most of you know who I am. State Representative, I represent East Bethel, Ham Lake, Oak Grove, Columbus, and one precinct of Oak Grove and one precinct of Andover. So, we're not in session now, and that's actually a good thing for the taxpayer because we're not changing any of the rules on you. We're not stealing any more of your money. But there the agencies have been turned loose in a lot of different ways. The legislature has actually not nowhere near as much control over what happens as everybody thinks we have. The agencies run many, many parts of your day to day governance. So, in the last, over the interim, I've been digging into some of the had meetings with different judges of with the administrative law aspect and different meetings in that whole area and trying to figure out how we could, the government can be more accountable to the people for what we actually do. If anybody has ever had a dealing with any of the agencies down there, and I will tell you that I have had been very frustrated having meetings with agencies just on simple things. And it's like, well, I'm not responsible for that. Well, who is responsible? Well, nobody's responsible. We have a committee. And then, well, who chairs the committee? Well, we don't have a chair of the committee. We have a circular roundtable, and we all just agree on it, and then it goes into place, and nobody's actually accountable for things at MinDOT and DNR and different things like this. And one of the silly rules that I heard about here just just in the last week or so was DNR put in a new rule that says, it used to be a husband and wife could get a fishing license, and one or the other could go in and buy the license for both of them. And now both of them have to be there at the same time to get a fishing license. Why? Why did we change that rule? Was 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 the state losing that much money to fraud that we have to actually have both the husband and wife there at the exact same time at the same place to buy a fishing license? This is just making your life as an individual or as a couple that much more difficult. It's burdensome and it's unnecessary. It's those simple, I mean, it sounds so simple, but it's it's those type of things that are repeated over and over and over again at the agency level that frustrates the population as a whole. And then you come back to me or a commissioner or some of the city and say, hey, what's going on here? And we can't actually tell you because we didn't even know what happened in the first place. Then I gotta go back and dig through it, and then it's it's we've missed the rulemaking, we've missed the public comment, et cetera, et cetera, and you go through all of this. So, I am working on trying to find ways that so we can draft legislation to actually try and bring some accountability back to governance as a whole. One other thing I wanted to mention was, many people have probably heard about the $250 million sweepstakes that the state was trying to have for frontline workers. Now, while we have sheriffs and fire people and ambulance, I'm sure there's some ambulance folks in here someplace, EMTs, that are, we would consider nurses, doctors, people that actually worked at the hospital, frontline workers. That pool of what we are going to consider frontline workers was an ever expanding pool. And trying to, the Senate and the House could not actually agree on a where you would cut it off and how much money, because the more people you put in the pool, the smaller the 250 million is per person. So, it was down to a few hundred dollars per person and shrinking fast as you started to expand this pool of people. And about a month, month and a half ago, Senator Abler had made a comment at a rally that said, maybe if the governor calls a special session for this, it would be a good time to have confirmation hearings on Commissioner Malcolm, who is heads HHS, is the Chair of Commissioner of Health and Human Services. And the governor did not like that very much because he knew with that confirmation hearing would end up that Commissioner Malcolm would be fired. So, he very publicly said that if that was a part of the part of the special session, we would not have that one. So, there's $250 million sitting on the bottom line waiting for us to come back to regular session. So, and then maybe we can start all over with that. But those are kind of the last big things that have happened in the last few, last couple of months since we've got out of session. But I know there's gotta be a million and one questions about something that's not that I'm not thinking about right now that is, you folks have questions? I saw a smile. Do you have a question? I know there's gotta be more. If anybody's got one, feel free to jump in, and I'll do the best I can.
Well, I've dealt a lot with the DNR over the years. And the bureaucrats make all these laws. Realistically, when it comes down to it, the commissioner, the commissioner.
Is the bottom line.
Is the one that should be.
Correct.
Making those, and she should be able to tell you why. I mean, it doesn't affect me personally, that license deal, but it's.
The concept, right.
It's one of the most asinine things I've heard of. It just, it doesn't make sense. Because you're getting the money.
Right.
I'm coming in and with my wife or without my wife, and we're gonna get a combination license. So, I don't know where the fraud is. Maybe they should look into the fraud of buying a warehouse to house bodies. I don't know. I mean, I, I say that wasn't jokingly, but.
That actually happened.
I, oh, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I believe the commissioner should be the one held accountable and should have to. But I see the same thing all the time. They have their meetings, they have their public content comments at time, and it all has to be done online or go to the commissioner's office. And then you hear about it when it's all.
When it's all said and done, yes. I'm gonna give you my personal example of what I, the one I tried to change with MinDOT. It's the signage, just how we go, how we develop, where we put signs, how we put them so we have some consistency through the state. My first question, when the when the guy from MinDOT came over and we sat down for the meeting, my first question was, state law says you're supposed to travel in the right-hand lane and only use the left lane for passing. Makes sense. How come when you get to a place where you go from a four-lane road to a two-lane road, it's always right lane ends? Why are you legally making everybody change from the right lane to the left lane? I mean, I get that it's just kind of a transition, but if you're supposed to be in the right-hand lane, and now you're gonna be in that that lane ends, you're legally making a left, you're making a lane change. So, why is it not consistently left lane ends, except for the rare exception where it makes sense because the left lane's gonna make a left turn or something like that? What, why is this? And he just dumbfounded, didn't know how to answer. It's like, well, who makes the rules? Well, it's the committee. Well, who's the Chair of the committee? We don't have a Chair of the committee. Well, how do you go about changing the rules? Well, we all just chip in on the rules, and then we just decide what we're gonna do, and then we publish them. So, nobody's actually accountable even on something as simple as that. So, that's where I got frustrated and said, we just need to change the way the agencies actually operate and put some accountability in there. One of my, another idea, one of my colleagues brought up last year was, every agency, when there's a rule published, there will be a name attached to the rule of who is accountable for that. So, then you could actually go back to this one person and say, why did you publish that? Whether it's the commissioner or somebody within the commission that has a small, like DNR's pretty big, MinDOT's pretty big, so have a smaller area. This is the one person responsible, kind of like your Chair of the committee. You're gonna be the one that's responsible for publishing this rule. And then we can actually steer all the questions and comments right to you, and you can start fielding, be responsible for your actions kind of thing. Like, kind of, we expect our kids to be responsible. Why wouldn't we expect the same thing from the people we elected to run our government?
Well, that happens with small businesses, people are responsible of their job.
Exactly. Everything we do, we're held responsible except at the government level, and we, it gets pawned off to, well, the agency did that. And the elected officials are like, I'm trying to figure out where this came from, where it happened, how it happened. And by the time you figure it all out, it's, that was a year ago we passed that. What are you talking about? Why are you so far behind the times? Well, it just got published and put into place until somebody actually gets harmed. And that's another piece I'm not real happy with. Somebody actually has to be harmed before you can even start a court proceeding. So, it makes it for a very cumbersome, very draconian in a lot of ways, burden upon the people that we're supposed to be serving. So, if anybody else has got any questions, yeah, go ahead.
Speaking of somebody being harmed, I've been talking with the local folks and haven't really gotten much of an answer so far. But I live on the south shore of Coon Lake, have it 25 years. And I'm not one of those people who thinks, well, I pay offshore taxes, so the lake's mine, you know, that kind of, I don't have that. But I am very concerned with having landing launch limits at each landing. There's only supposed to be so many boats launched out of this landing, so many trailer and car truck down boats. And it's routinely exceeded by 100%, 150% especially on holidays. Which means you have an inordinate amount of people on the lake. You're way beyond the capacity that the DNR set for. Forget about the people who live there getting on the lake, that's.
Not to mention parking and trailers on boats, yeah?
Oh, yeah.
That is really precarious.
And let's be honest, we all know, a good quarter of those people are drunk on a holiday.
Holiday weekend, yeah, there's a lot of impeding going on, yeah.
I'm very concerned with people being injured, and I'm very concerned with the lake being denigrated.
So, this would be.
I believe, Steve, you're an environmental engineer, right?
Retired, yeah.
Well, but you know, you know what traffic levels, especially two cycle motors.
To the oil, yeah.
90% of what's on a lake. The more volume, the lower the quality of the lake. The only thing that's helped Coon Lake, it's actually seems cleaner in the past 25 years, is milk water, vegetation, you know, cleans the waters. It's cleaner visually than it used to. And that's good, but a lot of traffic is gonna lead to people getting, get chopped up and murdered and all stuff like that. And it's gonna lead to the lake going right in the toilet.
So, they, I guess the gist of your question is, if we have these limits, how come they're not enforced?
Yeah.
Okay, I can look into that.
What's told by Jack is that if they're not supposed to, correct me if I'm wrong, but if there are open places to park, no matter how far they might be, you know, then people are allowed to park, and that kind of like trumps the sign. It says on the east end of Coon Lake, it's supposed to be 44 launch, launch boats there. Well, I mean, routinely people kind of like build that old lot that they're out on the road, a quarter mile on the east end.
That that is an issue that the city and the county took up last year. The first year of COVID, if anyone was on a lake or drove Viking Boulevard or County Road 17 in the summer, you saw all the trailers. And we had quite a few complaints from neighbors because they were having access issues on the Viking Boulevard because there's so many, so many parking there. So, so kind of a long story short, we worked with county, county did some changes to the highway and to County Road 17 to make, just from a safety aspect. But in terms of controlling the use of the lake, we did talk to DNR about the parking at Thielen Beach, and they're at their limit, and they have, DNR has no desire to expand the parking. But as you mentioned, you know, parking on public roads, when it's allowed, it's allowed. And it's amazing to see people walk more than a half mile to go park their trailer and then come out and come all the way back, so.
Last time I checked, we had more than one lake in Minnesota. An hour a limb, I think.
Yeah, but we have the best lake in Minnesota, how's that? So.
Yeah, but I think your point was, it wasn't necessarily the parking part, it was putting too many boats in too small of area of water also, right? I mean, doesn't that, don't the two of them come, work together?
I assume DNR came up with these limits based on studies of what the resource could bear.
Maybe.
I'm not a DNR person, but you know.
Sometimes it seems like they pull some of those things out of their.
Well, I didn't want to say that, but.
Sometimes, I mean, but sometimes it is on studies, that's what, you know, so you're never really sure.
But then, but then you come into the whole, the whole public conflict of, it's, it's public water.
Right.
I mean, it's owned by all the residents of the state.
One or the other, let's drop the lake limits, the launch limits, and let's cut the crap to four and four. It's one or the other.
Honestly, I've never heard, I've never heard of launch limits, so I, that's new to me, but.
I didn't, are they posted?
People will get injured with more. That's not bad. I've been operating boats for 50 years, that's. And people, and that quality of the lake will go down.
And I, and I agree too that, you know, you know, for the, for the, now, there are a lot of local folks that use the landing too, you know, that don't live on the lakes, so that they're East Bethel residents, so I don't want to throw them all in the same group. But, you know, a lot of that was folks that don't live in a lake or haven't even been to Coon Lake before, and so it's been a different couple of years. But if you live on a lake, we.
About precedes open.
Right.
Open exacerbation, but this has been going on a long time.
But what I was gonna get at, the ones that live on the lake and really use the lake know how to treat it a little better, I guess, that's what I want to say, than the ones that are transient users that that go around. And when I was younger, that's what I did too, I went around the lakes, and you don't respect it quite the same. But, but again, it is public water, so.
Well, yeah, it doesn't seem like the government, who supposedly puts up the launch limits, cares about me. That's my point, they don't seem to care about one way or the other.
Now, I take that point, it's kind of like, a good equation would be like, it's a speed limit. Are you gonna enforce it or not enforce it? How many times do we see people, 15, 20 hours? But it's the same, it comes out of the same vein. If you have a rule on the books, you either need to enforce it or get rid of it.
I'll put it this way, enforce it as much as you do it and slot limits on the lax, leach, whatever gosh is, and all those. If they're gonna take away your boat if you've got one too many fish, at least you ought to care if people are gonna be chopped up on Coon Lake because you've got five times the number of boats that are supposed to be on the lake. It seems it's completely erratic. And that, maybe that gets back to what you were talking about, there's no one responsible. Maybe that's what it is.
Oh.
Has anybody ever checked into the Star Lake program?
Can you?
They're funding the Star Lake.
Star Lake?
Star, become a Star Lake in Minnesota. They, it's an opportunity to clean up lakes, to win funding towards lake cleanup, towards education, stalking, but it is shoreline restoration, you know, a lot of different aspects of becoming a Star Lake in Minnesota. It's something you would apply for, and it would be a number.
It's about your.
One of the, one of the great assets we have in our city is Coon Lake, but is the Coon Lake Improvement Association, the CLIA. And the effort that these volunteers put into, you know, trying to preserve the lake, protect the lake, and do things positive for the lake is just astounding. And five feet in front of you is Leon Magar, who's been with CLIA forever and is a charter member maybe, but, you know, if you want to talk to Leon after that.
It's about the program, right? Oh.
Well, I, I, when I lived up in, in Reagan County, Big Sandy was part of that program, and I was, I helped bring that in for the community. But there was a lot of education that some of the issues that he is having problems with can be resolved with having that, those resources.
I always think the Star Program would be cool. When they put in these parking lots, we were told that the size of the parking lot was based on the acreage of the lakes. The bigger lake would have bigger parking. They didn't look at traffic at all. And, and they, and at that time, I believe they had one, one formula that they used for the whole state, where if you're in one of the metro lakes, that formula was no good. But they did it anyway, you know, that's what they based, there's, there's sizing study on for determining how many parking spots, and just based on acreage.
Thielen Beach.
You've got two problems, I don't know how, how you can fix the one problem with the amount of traffic. But if you could get the DNR to look at an overflow parking lot, look at some land, you know, out in that area by your, by your launch, possibly put in an overflow parking lot to get the, get the traffic off of the road and off of Viking and stuff, I think a lot of people would appreciate that.
Is there possible ways to change whether they should be parking on there and regulate that?
Well, the, the, Jack, we talked to DNR, and the DNR stated they had no interest in any expansion of any parking and the fact there isn't anything.
That, that's correct on Thielen, there is no room to expand down there unless you bought private property that was already residentially developed.
Which the DNR did about 15 years ago, 20 years ago.
Yeah, they put in about eight or 10 overflow parking lots.
There's a few, but that's it, and.
I'm confused. I'm not looking for more traffic.
No, I understand.
They're talking about the problem of traffic, and other people are gonna be talking about the problem of the parking. Both the.
On the parking.
No, there is not.
On the eastern, maybe not at Thielen, but on the eastern end, there's a lot of parking.
No, they actually park on the ice and down.
But those are the both people.
Yeah, and that's.
There are people who go to the beach, and there are people who launch boats. I'm talking about the people who launch boats, that's limited to 44, it says. They're the ones who are parked up and down the road outside, outside the parking.
What does it look like on the lakeside? What kind of parking do they have over there?
Quite, quite a nice parking lot for the beach. And generally, people do observe the rule not to park their boats.
That's why they had any parking, the road changes that people talk about, or the problem that both sides of the lake.
Yeah, Thielen's, Thielen's a whole different.
Yeah, we, again, the county, the county made some changes, put in turn lanes, put in.
Good example of what you were talking about, who the hell is in charge of making the decisions?
Nobody.
Is it the DNR commissioner?
Well, you can say DNR, but you, who do you put, where do you get the name down there, right, is, is what I'm getting at.
It's like the toilet.
Right.
Yeah.
And I, believe me, I share that frustration even more when I'm supposed to be able to make changes. It's like, well, you can't do that because we have this.
I was about to talk to him.
Well, I think, I think the one thing clear on this is, we don't have the answer here tonight, so it's.
That's true. Was there?
The problem is, there's never an answer.
Right.
Well, there's probably an answer, it's just in this room, so.
Everybody in there has talked about it for a long time. Well, with Thielen Beach, there was never a study. That was a city park, and the DNR took it over, and that was all the land they had to work with. They, if they needed to expand it, they'd have to go towards Buford's or, you know, go whatever, you'd have to go away from the actual landing on the private property. But that, at one time, was a city park and a city beach with a lifeguard tower and the whole works before the DNR took it over. It was that piece of land that they got. They didn't, they just said, what do we fit on this piece of land? What it boils down to.
Anybody else have a different topic they wanted to talk about?
Anything else?
Well, not necessarily anything else, but, I mean, we're gonna have to do some more digging, you know, but I take your point that, and it's something that I do want to at least dig into.
Following up with you?
Um, I would.
Or is it just gonna be two of us getting thrown in a wagon?
Well, I would like to be able to contact back with you, so if you could email me just your contact information, I'd appreciate it. Anybody else have anything? Oh, you in the back?
I have a problem with Nick Schultz writing all these citations about stuff that I don't really, like jumping my yard, a vehicle over 20,000 pounds, unholy vehicles. It's all bullshit.
Can you repeat it? I honestly couldn't, I hear you.
I see that guy Nick Schultz writing these citations for stuff I don't even have. Like vehicles over 20,000 pounds on my property, now I got 18,000 maximum pounds. I get a citation for a fence over six feet tall. There's other people with that six foot tall.
So, well, let's do this, here, that's.
I'm tired of it, citing people for crap I don't have.
Can we do this? That's a city question, while Cal's up here. Is there anything more from the state level? Any questions?
Ma'am?
You mentioned Commissioner Malcolm in the hearing.
Yes, ma'am.
Confirmation hearing. Has she never been confirmed yet? I didn't realize.
This is one of those interesting little quirks of the Senate. When the governor makes his, his or her appointments, when a new governor comes in and makes the appointments, the Senate confirms none of them. They actually save the confirmation hearings for when they want to fire one. And that's, instead of trying to go backwards to fire one, they just don't confirm them, and that, then they get fired at that point. So, that's why none of them were confirmed except for the, well, actually, none of them have ever been confirmed. They save that, is, it should, instead of a confirmation here, it should be called a removal hearing. But none of them ever have been confirmed. Just a quirk, right? Anybody else? Thank you.
Good, Cal, thanks. And we have with us County Commissioner Julie Brassdade.
Thank you. It's so nice to do this again, it's been like two years. So, thank you all for coming out. I am Julie Brassdade, for those of you that might not know me. I am in my ninth year on the county board, and my commissioner district includes Ham Lake, East Bethel, Bethel, about half of Andover, and the northern portion of Blaine. Currently, well, for about the last two years, I've been vice chair of the county board, and I have been Chair of Public Safety and Intergovernmental and Community Relations for about eight years. So, public safety has always been a priority for me. I think it's, it's important to support our law enforcement and the ones here do a great job. Always sorry to hear that Shelley Orlando will be retiring. She has been such a great asset to the county and this area specifically. So, I just wanted to touch a couple of points that you might have heard about lately. We have a very fiscally responsible county board, so one of our priorities has been to make sure that we're spending taxpayer money wisely, that we, we research and make sure we know where your dollars, your hard-earned dollars are going. I'm very happy to report that for our 2022 levy, we are coming in totally flat. We're not going to be collecting any more for 2022 than we did for 2021. So, you should not see a tax increase on the, on the county section of your tax statement. We have been really active in paying down our outstanding debt. When I first got on the county board, our outstanding debt was about $180 million and didn't have a ton of things to show for it. Previous board. Uh, previous boards were used to making a wish list, uh, every year of things that they wanted. Some were even operating expenses. And then they would bond for that amount every year. Well, then the board changed quite a bit. And we took on the approach that we're gonna save money for big projects, or only bond, borrow money for big projects. And operating and daily expenses, we're gonna be just part of our levy. So we took a whole, just like businesses and homeowners, we were trying to reduce our outstanding debt. You can't live on credit alone, right? I know Liz, she's a banker, and they, they look at how much outstanding debt you have. So one of the reasons that was so important to us was because we knew that in the, in the future, we were gonna have to look at a new jail. Our jail was built in nineteen eighty-three for about a hundred and forty inmates. Very quickly after that, they double-bunked them. And so we can now house maybe two hundred and forty, um, but that's even over the functional capacity. Uh, pre-COVID, we had, um, arrangements with other counties that we would actually board out inmates. Sometimes up to eighty a day. I think one of our contracts with Sherburne County was up to eighty inmates a day that we were having to send out of the county. So since two thousand seventeen, we have done two independent studies. We brought in people, jail specialists. I'm, I'm not an expert on jails. But we had two studies done that clearly showed that we had some extremely high-risk areas in our jail that, I mean, that we needed a new jail. And if you know downtown Anoka where our jail is located, there's not any room for expansion. The original design, um, was probably not the greatest design, but, you know, hindsight is always twenty-twenty. But best practices have shown what a new jail should look like. I've toured many of the new jails in the metro county. Anoka County's jail is the oldest in the metro area. So this is something we're, we're working towards. Um, we just hired an architect to come up with some designs based on what the two independent studies did, and how much, knowing our county is gonna grow, you know, what does ten years look like down the road? What capacity do we need? What does twenty and thirty years? We want to make sure we're really doing good due diligence so that when we move on to this big capital expense, we do it smartly and, and do it right. So that is a big thing on our horizon. Um, jails take a long time to build. Um, and we're just at the very beginning as far as what that will look like. What does the floor plan look like? And we've got all our, our key players from, um, our sheriff's office, then our, our jail staff working on that. And input from the, the judges, the bench. Because what does it look like? We knew during COVID, our jails were really down to minimum numbers. They were able to, uh, release and find other things for some of the inmates. So, but what does the future look like? We're, we want to make sure that we're really looking at that, and we, we make some really good educated decisions based on the, on the future. Um, when our jail was built, our population in Anoka County was about two hundred thousand. The last census has us at about three hundred and sixty thousand people. So more people, more crimes. Um, hence, we gotta keep supporting our, our law enforcement. So I wanted to bring that up and, and make sure that you know that we're just, we're not looking to build a Taj Mahal. We want to build something that's functional, that makes sense. Uh, we know some people have to be incarcerated in jails, right? We also know, know.
I think we already got enough people in jails in the neighborhood. We have the highest amount of people. We have to, since jails already go on their own.
Well, in an, I can only talk about Anoka County. But, um, according to Minnesota stats and based on population, we have, we're in the very low amount at the number of inmates we have in per capita in Anoka County. So that's, that's a really good thing. Um, so that was one thing I wanted to bring up. And, um, oh, North Star. Yes, North Star. Um, you might have read, the county of Anoka is in, um, discussions, disagreements with the Met Council over North Star. So prior to COVID, and, you know, more people staying at home, working, no one going downtown to work. Um, even on its best day, the North Star was heavily subsidized. Um, and three counties participate in paying the North Star operating expenses. So it's Anoka County, Hennepin County, and Sherburne County. The bulk of the stops for North Star are in Anoka County. So out of like eleven million dollars per year in operating expenses, Anoka County's share of that bill is well over six million dollars. Met Council, don't know how many of you know, they are appointed by the governor. They're not made up of elected officials. That has been one thing that I have lobbied for, and we've been working, working on for the last eight or nine years. Haven't gotten anywhere really on that. But, so COVID hit. Met Council, they, they make all the decisions as far as North Star goes. It went from about fourteen, average fourteen trips, Monday through Friday, down to four per day, fourteen to four. So, as a bill payer, I would anticipate that my cost of that should go down, right? So first two quarters of, uh, last year, we paid one point eight million dollars per quarter. Then third quarter came, and no one is on the train. I mean, just, no one's going downtown to work. We tried to talk to, uh, Met Council, tried to set up meetings with Commissioner Zelli, um, who oversees Met Council. Um, they're, they were too busy, they couldn't meet, you know, COVID precautions. Um, extremely frustrating. We said, this, the subsidy now, according to our numbers, is close to five hundred dollars per ride. That's, let that sink in for a second. There's so few people on that train. And think of all the good things we could do with that money. We have basically begged them. You know, we used to have a bus service, and that was really reliable. And ninety-five percent of the fare was recovered. So it was subsidized just a little bit. We've been begging Met Council for a year and a half. You know, let's just park the trains, let's put a bus on there. We know that people do need that transit option, but let's do it smarter. Let's see how it plays out. Because right now, if you ride from Anoka, Elk River, Coon Rapids, and you go downtown and back in one day, all of us taxpayers are subsidizing that by about, so that's about a thousand dollars a day. Per rider. So, last year, um, like I said, we paid our first two-quarter payments. Um, and, you know, they decreased, uh, their service by over seventy percent. So we anticipated that maybe third quarter, they'd say, okay, you've already overpaid, you don't need to pay anything. Not the case. They still want us to pay. Um, and we said, we want to meet. So they're not fulfilling their contract that we had. And we now have a meeting, um, scheduled for next month. So we will see how that situation goes. It'll be really interesting. So we, they think they, we owe them millions, and we're like, you, you decreased the service. We think that the cost should go down. If you're only operating two trips down in the morning, two trips back, when it used to be seven and seven, then the math just doesn't work. I don't know if this is the new math, or, or what, how, how they're coming up with this. So that is, that's a big, serious issue that we're working on and, and trying to find a common sense.
That's called social.
Mm-hmm. So, you know, that's at the county level. I mean, Cal was talking about some of his challenges. That's a big challenge for us right now. Because I have a really hard time subsidizing a thousand dollars a day for somebody round trip. Five thousand, that's one person, if they ride back and forth every day, five thousand dollars a week. Just think, you know, at the end of the month, you know, they could be buying a Lexus in a couple months. So we need, we need them to come around. And, uh, in my opinion, the bus used to work just fine. Um, let's put that back on the road, and let's see what happens. Yes. Um, you know, operating expenses, uh, there's no sunset as long as it's running or even not running, which that's a part that doesn't make sense. How can their costs still be, Anoka County's shares still be over six million dollars when it's not running? So, you know, we just, we're not trying to be the bully on the playground. We just want to make sure your taxpayer dollars are, are spent wisely. Um, we're actively working with the city of East Bethel on improving and expanding broadband in the city. Uh, with some of our ARPA dollars that the federal government sent to the county, we put a big chunk away so that we could partner with our local municipalities. Um, one thing we did learn during COVID was that there was definitely some underserved and unserved areas, uh, with internet. With kids being at home, parents working from home. Um, we have an economic development manager now that's actively working with Stephanie and trying to work through what the needs of East Bethel are. And, you know, we have this going on all over the county. Some cities, and, you know, say the southern end, Columbia Heights, Fridley, didn't experience some of the problems that we have up here in the more rural areas. But people trying to work from home and having their kids distance learn, it was certainly a challenge, a, a real challenge. So, um, we always try to be a good partner with our cities. If it, if it comes to a broad, broadband issue, or a county road, or the parking, um, the lake issue, you know, we know that's, you know, we, the county, that's a county road. So we said, okay, you, we would have liked maybe to say, no parking on the county road. Everything has to fit in the launch. That wasn't totally realistic either. So, but like you say, no one enforces how many people are on the lake. So, uh, at the county launches, we can put in the number of spaces that the DNR tells us that we can put in. And I know our good friends at the Lake Association and Lake Improvement, uh, they, they do such good work. My hat's off to you. They've, they stay involved and are, um, a great asset to Coon Lake. What was your question?
We're a, we're a financial supporter of CLIA for years. And, and despite their best efforts, if you're, somebody's pouring a river of crap and they quadruple the volume, no matter how hard you try to clean it up, it doesn't get any better. It just makes it more difficult. So their, their interests are identical. But there's something fundamental with what you said a little while ago. And I'll shut up. I gotta split anyways. I know I've talked too much.
Well, that's good.
I sometimes do that. But you're begging an unelected entity. Who the hell set this up? That's not how this is supposed to work.
You're absolutely right.
Unaccountable, unelected, ignorant, political. It's too crap.
I, I'm gonna suggest in the spirit of time that we don't go there. We'll be here for weeks talking about.
I can just nod my head. I. Yeah.
You know, that's something I don't know.
You're right.
It's a matter of structure. The structure is not as intended.
You're right.
We allow it to happen, and we have to fix that. That's what's, that's the Twilight Zone. Everybody's running around chasing their tails, all like, huh?
Mm-hmm.
And I said socialist math. I'm an economist. I studied that stuff for years. And they always BS you with the numbers, every time. And they, it's like Neil Young's song, "People Think It's Hey, Hey, My, My." It's actually out of the blue into the black, isn't it? They, they pay for this and they give you that. That's the Metropolitan Council. Oh, your, your county, your town's gonna grow by twenty percent a year. So just sign up for this BS water and sewer thing that we're on the hook for for eternity. And then the numbers come, don't come through. Oh. Anybody who helped accountable at Metropolitan Council for that? Those are the same numbers they do with every community around the metro. They, they throw up their numbers. And I, I've seen this game a thousand times.
Yep.
Always telling me this works.
Our board has been really active in requesting Met Council reform. Put electeds on there so that someone is accountable. So if you, you guys don't like what I'm doing, how I'm representing you at the county, you can vote me out next time, but we don't have that now. But like the mayor said, that's, that's a whole discussion in itself, but, yep. Um, so.
I'll keep my word.
Okay.
Thank you. And by the way, I have, as one taxpayer, I appreciate you looking out for how our money is spent.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, sir.
No, no, that, that wasn't my approval.
Oh, okay. Well, I know I went on for probably longer than it was intended. Sorry about that. Um, so I'll take any questions, you know, maybe even not, on the subjects that I brought up. Just wanted to touch a couple hot buttons that you might see some articles on. Um, I'm, all, my phone number, my email, everything's out there. If you ever have any questions, I'm literally just a call away. And, you know, very happy, and, um, it's really an honor to, to serve East Bethel. I, I enjoy my job every day, even if it's frustrating, I enjoy it. So, well, thank you.
Thanks, Julie. And I will attest to the fact that if you try to contact Julie, she will respond quickly, too.
Yep.
Uh, okay, Jack, would you do the honors of, of introducing our city staff that are in the audience today?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I noticed our fire chief, Mark DeSharm, was here. He just walked out. Uh, I don't know if he decided to go home, or he had a fire call he had to check on. But Mark DeSharm is here. Also in the audience is our public works manager, Nate Ashford. Our building official, Nick Schmitz. Our community development director, Stephanie Hanson. And, last but not least, is our police department liaison and soon-to-be-retired person, Shelley Michelle Orlando. And I want to echo Tim's comments earlier in the informal session that we certainly appreciate all you've done, Shelley. You've been a great asset to the city. With Shelley is also Derek Peters. He will be our new liaison, and we look forward to working with him. And our fire chief did decide to come back. Thank you, Mark.
So that, that's the staff that if you call, uh, these are the folks that answer. Um, you know, they're very dedicated. They're, they're here to serve us as residents, so. Um, you know, when you have, we have a question, you have a problem, call City Hall, and, uh, it'll get routed to the correct person. So with that, we're, uh, we'll open up the floor to, um, questions and answers, or if you have comments, anything you want to present. Um, do ask, if, if you don't mind, if you could come to the podium, uh, because that's where the microphone is. Uh, if, questions from the audience can't be heard, uh, online and, and on a tape, so. Who would like to start? Okay, Cal is a resident of East Bethel. Okay, Cal is a resident of East Bethel.
Yeah, I, just a real quick thing, and I don't know which one to address this to, but when I lived in my house, I actually got the monthly newsletter or bimonthly newsletter. And then when I moved into the apartment, I haven't seen one since, so I don't know how that distribution list goes, but I'd kind of like to keep up on the city news.
Do you, do you know of your neighbors?
I have not heard of anything ever distributed by the city there. So I don't know if it's just we're all new and we didn't get on the distribution list at the apartment. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
We'll check. No, that's a good point. Thank you. There we go.
I'll do it. I'll do it. I have no idea what I'm doing here, but I'll try.
Well, some others are the same way too, so.
More out of curiosity, this is, I've never been to a town hall meeting. I've been here two, three years. I'm excited to actually engage with the city that I live in. Out of curiosity, I mean, we come to you for all the things that we need you to do for us. Yes, we pay you taxes to do so, but I mean, this is our city too. You know, like I can't push the burden of responsibility always onto you. I live here. Practically speaking, what as a resident, I mean, we've got issues that this gentleman shared with us earlier. Like, do you have a place we can go to, someone we can talk to about things like, you know, we live here, what can we as the residents do to contribute to alleviate all of the crap you guys do other than just, hey, here's a problem, here's a problem, here's a problem. We pay you, deal with it. So, and that's a very broad, open-ended question. And, you know, don't expect like, hey, this is what you can do with it.
I don't think we've gotten this question before. I don't think so. It's a good question. Yeah. I mean, I, I think.
We have lots of volunteers.
Well, that was the second thing I was gonna, that was the second thing I was gonna say. You know, but really that's what we are here for, is to solve, help solve problems, right? I mean, I, I think councils, that's part of our mission. That's part of what staff is, is, is part of our job is to help everyone solve problems. I know personally, that's why I've been doing this so long, is, you know, like to see, you know, issues get resolved and, and find, find resolution, so. But in terms of, I mean, there's, all, all five of us, we can be contacted, phone, email, text. The city hall, we've got procedures on the website for, for complaints and, and things of that nature. I think we have, we have like a suggestion box there too.
Or when in doubt, call Jack.
It's at the front door when you walk in.
City administrator.
And a follow-through, Denise suggestion, we have volunteer commissions. We have a planning commission and we have a parks commission. And both of those have openings. We have two openings on planning right now and one opening on parks.
And booster days.
Booster day committee, that's an important one. You know, so there's, there's different ways to be involved, so in terms of being involved, that's all you can do.
Or generally just coming to meetings and seeing what's, to come to the council meetings and keep current of the events that are happening and that you may find your own ways of being involved just by coming here and being informed and coming to your own conclusions. Or that may spur an interest into serving on a commission. Because I, I think just about everybody here probably was.
Came up to. Came up to your commission.
But it, it started by attending a meeting. We all sat out there in, in that seat at one point and didn't know much.
Well, and you, you just attended your first meeting, so congratulations.
Yes, fantastic.
Are you planning to be more than two a year? I mean, I, you know.
The town halls?
Yeah, I mean, the, your council committee meetings.
Well, this is, this is, you know, this is kind of our formal time to come together as a community, as a group of people, but like I said, you know, it, it's, we're accessible all the time. You know, so don't, you know, folks don't need to wait for twice a year meetings or twice a month council meetings, you know, it's, contact us at any time, so.
Yeah, and there's usually some other social events that we attend. We used to have more pancake breakfasts with the seniors.
Yeah, there's quite a few.
We attend booster days.
Our, our website's got our community calendar, right? So a calendar should have all our community events.
Booster days, we usually always attend the fire department open houses. We usually all attend. The fire department usually has a winter fundraising event that was Belgian waffles. I don't know what it'll be this, this year. Mark, you have an answer for that?
That's a work in progress.
Okay, but there, there will be an event, so it's, a lot of those community events, a lot of us attend, so.
All right, step one, attend town hall meeting. Jack.
All right. Jack, give that fellow an application. Who's next?
I'll ask a quick question.
Okay.
Hello, good evening. I was just wondering, are there any updates on the Cambia Hills building or?
Check.
Business?
As, as most people know, the Cambia Hills project went into receivership. The receiver was appointed officially back in June. We've been working with them. They've been giving us updates. They have been in contact with several potential operators for the facility that would resume operations similar to the one that was there. We also heard a report from Michelle Benson at the chamber meeting about the Department of Health and Human Services was talking with an operator out of South Dakota. So those talks are underway as far as the upkeep of the building. The receivers have somebody employed there that's there 20 to 40 hours a week. They keep the property mowed and the place cleaned, making sure everything's okay. They're paying their water and sewer bills. They're current on their assessments. So we're just waiting to hear word from them. With the use of non-disclosure agreements with the people they talk to, they can't let us know exactly who they are, but we do get monthly updates from them. So that's the status of the Cambia Hills project.
So there is some activity?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I just had, I just had something really quick. Talk about going to meetings. We've recently started coming to the city hall meetings. And I don't know if it's always like this, but I was curious about Anoka County, not Anoka County, St. Francis School district meetings, and they're the same night. It looked like the same Mondays that the council meetings are. And that's kind of a problem if, I don't have kids in school anymore. But, you know, I still might want to get involved or those who might want to, just something to consider. And the other thing I wanted to just mention, because this was something going on, you know, viral a little bit. When we come here and say something at the council meetings, we have to give our address publicly. And there was a time a year or two ago when I had to do that. And I was reluctant, but I had to. But I was scared for some revenge by a certain person who would have heard what I said. So I just was wondering, I guess that's just kind of a given that people do that. If there's some way we could give that to you guys, I understand you want to make sure we live in the city, you know, if that's why we give our address. If that could be done privately, just something to think about. You know, I thought, oh, this is probably just the way everything's always done, but why?
You know, that's another question I don't think has ever been asked before. Do we, why do we request address?
I don't have an answer to that.
I, I know it's for record.
It, it, you know, the, the name and the address is for the record, but, you know, is it really necessary?
To, to say it out loud.
I mean, it, it.
It's written down.
I think it provides a little bit of just context, but.
And I understand that.
You're a resident, you know, or if you're not a resident even, you know.
It, it just was, I'm just starting to learn how to ask questions that are maybe, you know, like, yeah, why? Why has something done that way?
Well, we have a council meeting on Monday night and our city attorney will be there and we'll ask that question, so. Because it is kind of a data practice, you know, privacy issue, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Now I'm gonna be wondering that all night, so. If you'd like to state your name, that'd be, that'd be helpful.
My name's Leon Growthy.
Hey, Leon.
And I know years ago, they, the city, or at least some people in the city, were talking about bike paths. But I don't know whatever became of that, so I'd.
Maybe our public works director would like to discuss that. Nate, would you like to come up? That's a good subject, so.
If there are any bike paths, do you have a map of where they are?
Thanks, Leon. Nate Ashford, I'm the public works director for East Bethel. Our park commission has been working on a capital improvement plan for over 10 years now. And one of their top priorities has been bike paths. The problem we run into over and over is if we're trying to put a bike path in where houses are established, nobody wants a path in their backyard. So we do have some new paths that are going in with their development that takes place down on the southern side of the city there. The biking preserve by the water tower down there, that has a nice bike path through there that connects a walking trail. It's a, it's a something we're looking at every new development that comes in. We do have a master bike path plan. It's part of our comp plan for the city. As we wait longer to put them in, the price gets higher and higher and we don't have a big enough budget to put a lot of them in, but we have been putting in sections in different places. The Anoka County Highway Department, the ones that you see when you get kind of down into the further southern parts of Anoka County, you see them, they, they will put them in with the county road when they reconstruct that road. So if you go down, say Lexington Avenue, south of Bunker Lake Boulevard, there's a bike path all the way along that route. Same thing with the long Bunker Lake Boulevard. They have a plan that stretches up into Anoka County, but it's gonna be a number of years before it reaches up this far. It has to get through most of Ham Lake, Oak Grove, so those big regional trails will, will get up this far, so. But it is a priority. We did a, we did a survey of the residents a number of years ago and that was the number one thing they wanted for parks, was walk, walking trails and biking trails, so. We are aware of it and we're trying to work on it. And if you have any questions, you can talk to myself or anybody in our park commission as well, up to date on it, and our city council, so.
We did recently, maybe it's not completed yet, adding more paths to Booster West?
Yes, we do have Booster West. We are doing about 3,000 feet of trail to kind of connect. We have the path that goes around the pond right now. It's gonna cross Booster West and make a loop around the softball fourplex out there, so make another connecting loop. It'll connect the playground and the new baseball field too. Trail's constructed. We are gonna pave it in the springtime. We weren't able to get paving done this fall yet, so. It'll be first thing in the spring.
And we did add another segment on Baton Street from the existing trail. It was put in for Prairie Pines and extended that down to 226th Avenue. One of the things that we're looking at, because trails are very expensive, is that we're trying to make links that connect A to B and not just trails to nowhere. So in utilizing that, we're also trying to couple that with the widened shoulders on our paved MSA city streets and county roads. We do have a few plans. I think there is one coming up for John Anderson Park. There'll be an extension of the little walking trail bike path there. And that has the potential to connect up to Jackson Street and then to Bondi Park. And we've also had some, just some general discussions. It hasn't been followed through yet about even connecting that up with the Bethel Bike Trail Facility that's off of University Avenue. So there are several things in the process, but it's just a matter of finding funding for them and trying to make those links now that make sense, so you're traveling from one destination to the other.
Thanks.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes?
I'm warmed up now, man.
You're getting closer to being on the commission. I can tell that, so.
Other questions are flowing. So first of all, yeah, there was an election yesterday. I, I wish I had been here on the first, but how did that go? At a results center or anything like that?
We, there were no elections in East Bethel.
Okay, so this is, this is, um.
There's a, some cities, some cities had elections this way.
Okay, okay.
Next year, there will be.
Sure, okay. Yeah, I had, I had read about, between you and the previous mayor who's running again?
That would've been a year ago.
Okay, sure, sure. Either way, I, so I was like, oh, November 2nd election. So I started reading up and I noticed in both of your statements, there was talk of, you know, developing along the 65 corridor.
Right.
And the plan to be to preserve the rural nature, the feel of everything outside of that immediate strip. There was also talk though of, you know, continuing to develop housing and stuff and, you know, this kind of broad spectrum, but, you know, I don't know what that looks like, but to me it sounds like it's still taking away from the rural, you know, kind of woodsy aspect of East Bethel in general. So what, what is that, what is that plan as far as the development of housing opportunities look like? I know west side of Durant, 213th, there's 10 houses going up. Pretty much in my backyard, there's another 30 acres that's for sale just north of that. You know, is this, is this a trend that's gonna continue that, you know, the rural is gonna turn into congested neighborhoods?
Well, let me try, it's a big subject. Simplest terms is the three-quarter mile on each side of Highway 65 is what we refer to as the corridor. And that, and that's the only, literally the only section of the city that's changing in terms of density, housing density. That's where the commercial development is focused to be, as for higher density housing, the apartment complexes, things like that.
Only place for sewer and water.
Yeah, well, it, it, there's utilities, but that, that, the higher density can't happen without the utilities, but it's restricted there and the rest of the city is staying the same. Now with that said, with the developments just north of yours, Anderson Meadows, that, that is what, how the city's been developing for the last 30 years, two acre lots.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, so what you're seeing is new, it's, it's, it's development.
Yeah.
But that's kind of what we've all loosely defined as our rural, so.
I, yeah, I had, again, I've been here two, three years. First time I've done anything like this, so. That just sounded like it's gonna start packing it in, but.
And the city doesn't push the rural development. That only occurs as land sales happen.
Sure, sure, okay. And then they, they would come to you as far as an approval for the development?
Yep, the process there, they come with a plan, a concept, they work with staff. You know, we've got ordinances that define what they can do, you know, how big a lot, setbacks, road standards, things like that, so.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Remember, there's two openings on planning. You'll really learn a lot there, so. Anyone else? If you could state your name, please.
Thank you, Gail Murphy. I've got a couple of things. One of them is to elaborate on what, I didn't catch what the gentleman.
Gabriel.
Gabriel, had to say, in regards to being accessible to the residents. I know that there's a lot of times that I've tried to approach and I know through the Minnesota League of Minnesota Cities that the council's limited as to how we can approach people individually with issues or concerns. And I know that there's issues with, you know, sanctioning and all that kind of thing if we were to try to go to them directly. I've looked into that and I know I've tried to contact people and it's like, well, you have to come to the council. So in that regards, how do we, not in a sense of an appeal hearing, like if there's a, you know, violation or, you know, some sort of issue, how do you go to the council then to present, you know, a concern or something like that? How do we arrange a meeting and how, you know, are we entitled to that? What's the process for that? That type of thing. Not in the form of a, of an appeal hearing, but to come in and to talk to the council directly. I agree, I don't think it's the best place to air a lot of garbage or, you know, that type of thing. But when you want to go to the council and actually present information and work with them on something, how do you arrange a meeting like that?
It's kind of a broad question, but I would think first you're gonna work with staff. The staff needs to bring it to council. I mean, that's how kind of things work. We're just decision makers when it comes down to it.
So that, can I get a second question then, because that might help with that?
Sure.
Currently, my understanding is, and I, I brought this, this question to Jack recently, and asking how, if we have concerns about whether it be code enforcement, if there's any, you know, concerns about any discrimination or anything that we might have, how do we go about as a city dealing with those complaints? I, when I asked him. I, when I asked him, you know, how is that process, who handles them? How do they result, you know, actually investigate them, look into them? How do they, you know, come up with the determination, where are those records? So that, you know, we are being accountable as a city to make sure there are corruption or so forth doesn't happen. I think everybody knows that Shelley had resigned recently and there's been a lot of discussion on the next door sites about different concerns with things that are happening. And I just am trying to find a process as a, as a resident so that we don't go in this cycle like they're talking about, where you keep trying to find an avenue to reach people, to be able to be heard, to be able to, you know, present, you know, information, evidence, to get issues resolved in a timely and efficient manner for both the city and for the residents. So I'm trying to find out, I was told that you, you can fill it out on the website, put in a complaint. I've had a complaint canceled. I've heard that then, you know, I asked, how are they investigated? I was told that Jack handles them and if it's to do with him, then it would go to the city attorney investigating the complaint. And I guess for the resident, I think that some of those concerns are big and they're liabilities for the city. So, and I looked in all of our ordinances and our, you know, material on the website, looking for something that is more, that elaborates on that more specifically. And so that, for example, you know, if it's one person handling a complaint only and they never contacted a person, there's never a report that's, you know, documenting any facts or investigating anything, how do we, how does that fare very well for, you know, the residents and for the city? I mean, 'cause you'd like to think things can reach a resolution. So that's what I'm trying to say, if you put in a complaint or, you know, if you don't get anywhere there and you approach the council, they can't work individually, again, you're kind of in this spinning thing where you can't actually get to be heard.
Well, I think, I think if, if, if there's an issue that involves, um, you know, kind of a lack of service, you know, response from staff, I mean, you're, you're gonna, assuming you'll contact one of the council persons and then, then we have the discussion of why that wasn't done. So, I mean, I don't know if I would talk in a circle, but to me it's more of a check.
So what you're saying is we can contact a council member, bring our grievance, and will we then?
Well, there's a process, there's a process, I mean, we've had this discussion before. I mean, there's a process to file a complaint. And i- i- if you don't, if you're not satisfied with the service on it, certainly contact one of the council members and we'll find out what it is.
What constitutes the service? You can file a complaint and you never hear anything back?
Well, that's not right, is it?
That's what's currently happening. And in some cases where I file the complaint, I get it where the complaint says it's closed. Or if you ask for release of data information, which is supposed to be public information, and you request something, I don't know that it should be able to be closed and forwarded to somebody. I think that you're supposed to be able to be, you know, receive the information that you're requesting unless they give you a reason specifically that it's not, that you're not able to present it, or not able to release the information. So at that point, I guess what I'm asking is, if we go that route and then we want, we don't get anywhere and there's like a roadblock, then what, am I correct in what you're saying is we can go to a council member and then it'll go in front of the council or it'll be dressed, they'll be talking about it? Or we then will hear back, or how does that happen?
Well, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that it's something that's gonna come to council for discussion, no, I, I don't think it would. But i- i- if there's an issue that you're, you feel like you're not getting service from a staff member, I mean, Jack, Jack reports to council. So ask us and we'll, we'll ask why it's not being done.
There's always the option of the public forum to report to council about a certain grievance.
Public forums no longer media, even, you know, in media, it's not on the media.
We have public forum every council meeting.
Pardon?
Every council meeting, we have public forum.
Yes, you have public forum, but it's not on the media anymore and they try to.
Why, why is it important for you, for it to be on media for you?
I'm just saying, these things and these changes have happened. I'm saying that one of the things that happens is that then the minutes come out and they're not verbatim. They, you know, are typed out and they're not exactly as the minute, the actual media says.
The purpose of a public forum is to raise an issue with council that may or may not be followed up on. Public forum is not a discussion, it's not a problem solving.
And that's what I would.
So it's just, I mean, in your case, the issues are, it wouldn't make sense to come to the for, public forum 'cause we're well aware of the issues that you've been, you know, discussing with the staff.
But again, if you're not getting anywhere and you're need, you still haven't, for, for me, in my situation, which I didn't wanna bring, you know, go that route, I was hoping to get it a little more generalized, so we wouldn't be making that type of a public, you know, specific and put you on the spot either, you know, type of situation. But I think that I'm still not hearing that if something is a roadblock, and in my situation, I've been dealing with something since two thousand and fifteen, and I've been asking for a meeting with the council, I've asked for an appeal hearing, which I didn't receive. I would ask in general, if somebody wants to, you're saying on one hand, you can access the council, each one individually. But that's touchy because they really shouldn't be making the decisions or anything individually.
Oh, they can't.
Right, exactly, so I'm saying, is that a possibility of asking? And especially if you've felt like you're exhausted and you're not satisfied as a resident and you feel like you're, haven't been able to get anywhere, can you request a hearing? It doesn't even have to be a public hearing, it could be a private hearing or a meeting with council in order to finally reach a resolution by just having a moment to be able to air all of the information that you've been wanting to do?
Well, firstly, we can't meet privately. It's by law, it's a public meeting, okay? And secondly, in no way would I see that to be effective at all resolving your matter.
So then how do we go forward in that if it's not being looked into? If you file a complaint and it's not being investigated, then how do you do that?
If, if you're, if you're not satisfied, you have legal, you have legal means, right? Talk to your attorney.
So you want people to sue the city? That doesn't make sense. You're asking for you to approach the city and be able to display all the information. It doesn't make sense that you would then take litigation against the city versus the opportunity to show all of the information, that would be.
Gail, your issue's been in litigation for five years.
That's exactly my point.
Right.
And for five years, I've asked, more than six, for five, six years, I've requested a hearing. The first time in two thousand and fifteen, I never received it. I requested it every time since. I've been threatened to have my search warrant on my home without probable cause. I've asked the council for a meeting and as of today, six years later, I've still not received a meeting with the council. I don't see where there would be harm in the council meeting with me in order for me to present the evidence and then feel like there's a determination made.
Because it's a legal matter, it's being litigated, we are not, the court.
Aren't you represented by an attorney, Gail?
No, currently I'm not, they, they, they know that, but it's in the process of going to different issues, but no, currently not.
But to your initial question about the complaints, if, if, if you feel, you file a complaint and it's not being addressed, bring it through the attention of a council member and council will ask staff why it's not being addressed.
So just for one more thing for everybody's sake, how is the complaint process being handled? There's only one person looking at it, is that correct? And that, at that point, they're taking?
Jack, can you explain the complaint process?
The complaint process is really very simple. If there's a complaint against a staff member, whether it's their conduct or dealings with the public, you can contact me, I will find out what's going on and report back. If you don't get a report back, then call one of the council members or the mayor and let them know what your issue is. And I'm sure that they will tell me very quickly that they've heard from somebody, that they haven't gotten a response.
So it's only, you're the primary and the only person that's making the decision on the complaint?
No, I will investigate the complaint, I'll go to the person who was complained about.
Will you receive a report back on that or ask the person, for example, when I put in my complaint, the ones who've been canceled? And then when I ask to have some sort of determination, I would think they would call or you'd be questioned, or they would be asking for evidence or information to, to look into the complaint. But if you're not contacted and you're not asking for any further information, documentation or anything, how can that be an effective complaint system? Because there has to be an opportunity for the information that's, you know, brought, that's calling for the complaint.
Gail, you didn't let me finish.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And based on that, we would contact the person that you issued the complaint on and find out what the issue was. And then we would report back to you and if you had anything to follow up on, we would do that. But we haven't received a complaint from you. We did, we did receive a quest, an appeal for an administrative hearing back in February of two thousand and twenty.
I have the emails showing the request and that they were canceled, they're, that's hard copy.
Gail, Gail, we're gonna.
I don't want.
We're gonna put this discussion in, 'cause this is the same discussion we had at council and we're not gonna get anywhere here and that's not the purpose of the public forum.
I agree, I thought was not, my goal was not to talk about my individual situation, but more so to state, is this a system that we have that's being effective for all of our residents that we feel like we can get resolution? I wanted to make sure that if it's one person that's receiving it, they should be having reports back or there should be a way to find, is there documentation on what the determinations were? Can the residents access the complaints that have been put out there? How many people have complained? That's why there's accusations of corruption. So I'm just saying, it needs to be transparent and there needs to be a system that we feel the residents as well as the council feels is effective and it's servicing, servicing all the people. So that's why I wanted to bring it up, because I still, me individually, I think it's challenging to see how one person can review the complaints and it wouldn't be, you know, it would be effective in having only one person that would take it in without having that be more than one person that would review it and it's specifically depending on the significance of what that complaint would be. And currently, I think it's only an, just you individually for any complaint other than for yourself, is that correct?
It funnels to me, but then I'm answerable to the council. So if I don't perform my job on this and you let the council know there's an issue, I have many contacts with Mr. Harrington, he brings this stuff up to me.
Okay.
With the mayor, with Wanda.
So then you say.
Wanda's been here for three weeks and she's already given me one issue.
Okay.
And also with Mr. Mundell.
Okay.
So the council.
I just knew you were limited as to, you know, there's some questionable, whether you approach council members individually, I know there's some.
You, you can absolutely do that, but we can't make any decisions. You can give us information and we can pass it along to Jack.
I had contacted Tim and he wasn't, you know, and a couple people with, per the advice of Julie. And then I was told that they couldn't do that. So I'm, you know, it's, again, it's kind of miscommunication because I did reach out trying to, you know, do just that, but we shot down saying, no, we had, they couldn't do that. So it just, I don't wanna take any more time, I'm just bringing it up because I would hope that it's a possibility that we look into it a little bit further. Is there anything we could put on the website or anywhere that that process and so forth is more, you know, described more thoroughly and, you know, a little more obvious as to what can happen and the steps, so people know what to do? That would be really helpful.
Okay, well, duly noted. Good, thanks, Gail.
Thank you.
Anyone else tonight? Uh, go ahead. I'm sorry, can you come up with the microphone?
I'm being cited by this clown, Nick Schultz, for stuff I don't even have. I don't have a vehicle over twenty thousand pounds, he repeatedly cited me for that. I don't have an inoperable vehicle that I own. They're all operable, but yet I'm cited for that. And a six-foot fence, I have it in a little garden enclosure in my front yard. Now, I don't know why that's gotta be taken down when there's people with six-foot fences all the way around their goddamn house. So I'm not happy with all these citations and he keeps sending me more and more.
Okay.
You know, and it says if you pay him, you're guilty. I'm not guilty of none of that, so I ain't paying no damn fine. And I don't know how you can add it on to my taxes at the end of the year, just 'cause he writes a citation for stuff that ain't true.
Well, the citations are issued by our building inspector based on.
I know who it is.
Yeah.
Nick Schultz.
Right.
Yeah, and he's got, or Schmidt or whatever it is. But anyways, he's got his information wrong. What constitutes junk on my property? 'Cause I got antiques in my yard? I got a gas pumps in there worth thousands of dollars and you call it junk?
Mostly abusing.
Yeah, I'm tired of this.
Jack, we have a.
I've already dealt with him before on building a new home there. And he told me to do this, do that, I spent thousands of dollars to do what he wanted me to. And he was the only one in here, the other one I was working, that he told me what to do to get this thing. I even had, um, do you put out, if anybody complained, 'cause I was three feet or seven feet too close to the back fence. And I got, I, I had to tear the whole thing down. Because I was trying to repair the floor of my.
So, so, so Jack, it's kind of the same subject.
So there's an old cabin there.
Hang on.
Now he wants me to clear this lot completely.
What, what's the appeal procedure for a resident that's issued citations?
They can appeal for a citation hearing, administrative hearing before an administrative law judge. And that law judge will hear the case and rule either in favor of the city's decision on the process or the resident's appeal that it's incorrect.
Well, I got, I could take a picture of the truck, it says eighteen thousand pounds right on the side of it in black letters, it's an old U-Haul, I'm using it for storage.
Can I, can I, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Uh, you, I'm assuming you recently received a notice stating there would be a public hearing Monday?
Something like that, it wasn't gonna be here, I was supposed to be out of town.
If, that, that, well, if, if you, if you can provide us evidence that these things are not as stated, that'll can be considered at the public hearing, that's the time to address this.
And I tore down the house, but there was still a cabin on the property that I attached to this. I had four lots, they told me if I put the five lots together, my other lot together, they could give me the permits. Well, they did nothing but lie.
I, I think what Jack is trying to explain is that this is not the place to discuss the details. Details are, are at the public hearing.
Yeah, I'm so pissed off at him. You know, it's wrong, what do you, what, it's just wrong.
Okay.
But.
His information is incorrect.
Well, that's, that's the discussion need to have at that hearing, so.
He stops outside the thing like a chicken and takes pictures or some damn thing. I even moved the U-Haul from one side of the yard to the other side, so you could see that it's not inoperable. But I'm using it for storage and that's, so I don't license it. You don't have to license it unless I put it on the public street, as far as I know. But it's operable, all they gotta do is put tabs on the thing.
Well, again, you know, this is discussion to have at the meeting. Thank you. Denise.
My name is Denise Loschinski.
Go ahead, Denise.
Can you guys give us an update on any new businesses or anything that's happening in the city? 'Cause there's a lot of rumors going around.
Well, I don't know about the rumors, I only know about facts, so. Broadband, okay, we touched on broadband, Commissioner Brassad touched on that. The city has recently, we interviewed and then hired a consultant to assist the city in developing a broadband plan. Now, what, what the broadband plan is centered around the idea or the goal of council is to have all, all of our properties within the city of East Bethel be accessible to broadband internet. And many of us take it for granted, but there's a lot of neighborhoods in the city that don't even have cable, which means they don't have, I saw a hand in back. Get that address, Jack, there's another neighborhood, so. So there's neighborhoods and some of these neighborhoods aren't even that old. But, but they don't have cable, which means they don't have cable internet, which is, as Commissioner mentioned, is, this past two years have been a monumental change in the way we deal with working from home and, and our communications. So the idea is, is to put together a plan and to find ways to bring better service to the, the non-served areas and the underserved areas. So that plan, I, I'm not sure the timeframe, but we're starting, we're meeting with the consultant soon, I assume?
They, they will start on that, their work within the next week or ten days and have it completed by February. They'll be setting up a number of meetings, some of them which will be public and they'll do some outreach stuff to try to survey, that'd be part of their needs survey to determine what to do and what areas to do, what areas are underserved, what areas aren't served. So you'll be hearing much more of this in the next couple of weeks. So you'll be hearing much more of this in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah. And the challenge with, like with anything, is how, how, how do we fund that? How, how does that get paid for? And as Commissioner mentioned, there's a, a new grant application out that, that we're gonna be involved in, and, and that's gonna be one possible way, but the consultant's gonna help us seek other areas. Call, did you have something?
Just real quick, you said just everybody accessible to broadband. Could you define that a little better? Like twelve-one, twenty-five-three, a hundred?
No, I can't. That's why we hire a consultant.
I know the standard's twenty-five-three.
Yeah, that's the minimum.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that, that's the minimum scalable to one-hundred, one-hundred.
Yeah, we, we already threw that out the window, because if, if that's the standard now, it's not gonna be a standard a year from now, right? So, but, but there's, but there's, I, I'm not sure how, how underserved is gonna be defined. We, we definitely know the ones that aren't served. And we're actually in discussions right now on trying to put an application together from the grant program to work with Midco. And we've actually identified three neighborhoods in the city that are ready for Midco to, to come in. It's, it's just the funding. And, and just so you know, there, it, it's, it's like with any business, you know? When you think about how far we're separated, you know, it's pretty hard to justify spending a lot of money on, when there's four houses per mile. You know, so it's, it's the density that drives their, their business model. So we're trying to find ways to deal with that, and, you know, a, as, as Julie alluded to, you know, up here, we're not as dense as we are down in the county, or southern part of county, so it, it's harder to do things, and it's more expensive to do things up here, so. So that's one thing we're working on. Last week, and I think many of you probably noticed, we opened a new road, Sand Hill Parkway. It's a new frontage road on the east side of Highway sixty-five, south of Viking, down to one hundred and eighty-seventh lane. I'm sure many have heard about QuickTrip. QuickTrip has signed in to build a new station at that intersection. Or at that area. Right now, there is a pad there. They're not planning to start construction, unfortunately, to two thousand and twenty-three, but it is coming soon. So that road opened up, and what's important about that road is, is, you know, is, road improvements are generally driven by safety concerns, and the, having that road provides an alternate route for, for folks that wanna use the businesses on the east side of sixty-five. If they're coming from the east, from Viking Boulevard, say, they can access that area without having to get on sixty-five at all. And so that, that, that's part of the safety improvements. It also opens up some economic development. QuickTrip, for, as an example. And there's also gonna be housing that's gonna come in that area that we're gonna see fairly soon, in next month or two, we'll see the actual proposed plans. And we've, we've seen the early plans, and as some of you have probably heard, it, it is higher density. It's a hundred and fifteen homes are gonna be planned to go in there, which by our standards is astounding, but it is part of the, that whole made, complete comprehensive plan on focusing the development along Highway sixty-five. And so we opened that road, Sand Hill Parkway, and another, for, for good or for bad, I'm gonna hear some groans, we actually have our first roundabout in the city as well as part of this road. So, so we can say we're getting up into the modern days, I guess, in terms of roads. The, and then just in terms of, of, just to give you a flavor of how development is going, Viking Preserve is a housing development on, along Viking Boulevard on the west side. It's the homes you can see built from the intersection of sixty-five and Viking. That is fully sold. So by probably early next year, all the lots will have homes on them. East Bethel Apartments, the first phase filled up pretty quickly. The second phase is getting completed right now, so there's another sixty-seven units there. And I haven't heard anything about how that's filling in in terms of waiting list. I don't know, Jack, if you have.
I don't know anything about the occupancy.
Cal knows.
I do. I talked to the superintendent two weeks ago. She said she had over half of applications to fill, over half already.
So which tells me they'll, once they open, they'll fill the whole thing. So it, it's, so the demand is there, you know, we, we read about it. So it's, it's filling some needs. We, we have a, a number of East Bethel residents who relocated by choice to the, to the apartment buildings, so it's a choice. And so that, so that's going on, and then we have, there's some businesses coming in, right, right in that area, too. There's a distribution center right next to Aggressive Hydraulics that's going in, so. We have a number of things going on. Housing development's coming in, so there's things going on.
I know you always pretend to be a grocery store. When am I getting a grocery store?
Don't know. The, the, the Elevage Development along the east side of sixty-five did have penciled in a grocery store, so it's all, it's all market-driven, and everything we've heard, and we, we, obviously, we know that the whole, you know, retail industry has changed, and we don't know where it's gonna end up right now, too. I don't think anyone does, so. So I don't know what that means for grocery stores, but the need and the demand certainly hasn't changed, so.
There, there have been discussions with the developers, one of them regarding a grocery store, and although there's nothing been identified, those talks are moving forward. And as we know, that retail follows rooftops, so the more development that occurs along the corridor, you know, it always increases our chances of getting that type of business to locate in the city.
Now, there's, there's many other needs, too, that, that, you know, a lot of, a lot of folks wanna be served, too, so it's. I mean, the, the, the nice thing is, I talked earlier about the corridor plan and the comprehensive plan is, these are, this is all planning that was done, you know, over ten, fifteen years ago. And, and, and council in the city have been true to the plan. And, and, and the whole idea was not, wasn't to promote and make all this stuff happen. We don't build grocery stores. We don't build apartment buildings as a city. But the, the idea was to have the framework in place for things to happen. You know, the, the developments, you know, Cambie Hills wouldn't have happened if we hadn't had built the frontage road a few years ago. Cedar Creek Senior Living, you know, talk about something, talk about wanting a grocery store. Senior Living has been want, a lot longer a grocery store, and we finally have that. So it's, it's, you know, it, it's kind of work, working with how development happens and, and being in control when it does come, so. Yes?
Yeah, I utilized the storage units right next to the hockey arena, and that guy was promising me that he was gonna have that done this fall, the second phase. And I'm just wondering, is there a hangup with permits or something? He hasn't broke ground yet. Every time I talk to him, he keeps telling me, well, they're still working on it.
Steph, you wanna answer it real quick? I think we got news on that, so.
Yeah, we do. Actually, they had stuff that they, they needed to comply with when it came to engineering and stormwater drainage and stuff, so we have all of that. That was just recently, last week, completed, so now we're just waiting for building permits for them, so they can turn in their building permits and start.
Thank you.
So one, it's one thing I think I've learned over the years is nothing ever gets built when developers think it's gonna be built, and, and there's always delays, and, and, but, you know, it's, it's a process.
I run it equipped, and I do their work, and I know usually the people push that through so they're not into winter construction.
Right.
I just wanted to hang up with the city, because that's what he told me.
I think, what, what, Steph, wasn't there a plan to get footings in yet this year? So it's in motion.
Okay, cool.
Anything else? Anything council members wanna add? We've been listening a lot tonight, I guess, so.
Steve, the only thing I have to say, you know, that new service road, I've heard a few complaints that the city sold out, gave them a lot of money. We didn't give this, give them a dime. All the money came from COVID, came from grants from the DNR, so that's, when, if you hear that we've sold out, we have, we didn't give them a dime. And I just, I just wanna make that clear.
Yeah.
That service road didn't cost us anything.
And really, to, to add on to that, you know, we had, we had the ribbon cutting last week, and one thing it talked about was, and we all know the reputation is that, that the highway money always went to the south part of cities, right? You know, that's how it's been for a long time, and, and, and we're seeing that shift. And that, that project probably wouldn't have happened without, we've got a three-point-two-million-dollar grant from Mendoc to build that frontage road. And in, 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 they're investing it from a safety standpoint and a traffic management standpoint. You know, we have interest on, you know, helping our residents get to where they need to go and, and then open up some economic development in areas, so. So i- it's been a very good relationship to have that, but that, as Tim said, that, that road is pretty much constructed all with dollars, state dollars, and, which are our ta, it's our tax dollars that we put in, but for a change, we're having some of that money come right back directly to our community, which is good, so. Yes?
Learning how to do this big picture thinking.
I'm, I'm sorry, can you speak about, you're.
Yeah, sorry. Uh, learning how to do the big picture thinking, kind of, you know, the, been in the process of planning all this development for ten, fifteen years, you said, now. Where, you know, we're getting into the brass tacks that's happening now, what is the next ten, fifteen years gonna look like? Bring it, your house is, you know, what is the assumption of that? From there, I imagine you have a goal and a result that you're hoping to achieve.
Okay.
With that, what, what?
Well, first thing, you should be in a council on, work me in on Monday night, because we talked about frontage roads for the rest of the city. Talked about plan.
Last Monday?
Last Monday, so last Monday. But that, that's pretty much all presented in what's, like, the comprehensive plan. Every city in, in the metro area has a comprehensive plan, and within that talks about, it'll show, it'll have drawings and descriptions of, you know, where we think commercial's gonna be, where industrial, where housing, different types of housing. And it describes it, so that's available on our website. So, I mean, it's, it's a sizable document, but you can get through it. Look at the pictures, that's what I do, so.
It's reviewed every ten years, isn't it?
Every ten years, it's required to be renewed, and we just renewed it two years ago.
For two thousand and forty.
Yeah.
We just got approved last, a couple, back in the spring.
Was it, was this last spring? Okay. It's a process to do it, to make that plan. But every ten years, it's gotta be reassessed what the community's, you know, what they want the community to look like, so.
That's not, not just done by us. When it gets reviewed, it's about a year and a half-long process where there's several community meetings, so we invite, try to get as much input as we can to see what the residents think, and then, then not just this board. The park commissioner reviews it, planning and zoning reviews it a couple times. EDA reviews it, so it's a long process that's just not made up from five people sitting up here.
Any other questions? Yes?
I know you had talked about the corridor, like sixty-five being, being more densely used. Now, the current, uh, proper use, is the, the increase in density exactly being developed in the prison, or is that what that?
Well, the, for the existing developments, neighborhoods that are in the corridor, tho- those neighborhoods won't change. So i- it's basically the, the open land that's, that's designated. I mean, if, if you're in a, you know, we've got some two-acre developments along that corridor, too. We're not, city's not proposing to change it. They're not proposing to put utilities in there. That, that part will actually stay, but I think for the, for, just for the sake of simplicity, it, it's the three-quarter mile corridor, so, but, so there's, there's quite a bit of development. It's already there. That won't change at all. It won't be affected, so. Okay, anything else? We're almost gonna make it to nine. That's pretty good. Yes?
What is your publication for notification of EIS and EAW?
For which project?
Well, okay, the projects that are coming up. What, what is your publication?
Well, we, we haven't had any projects that needed a.
We haven't had any that required those.
Yeah, we, there's, there's certain size projects and certain types of project that automatically require an EIS. EAW is, you know, a little different, but.
You're, you're talking, you're talking industrial, you know, coming in, too, so that would kind of, or.
It's just.
Actually, so depending on what it would be, whatever the project is, what is your, what is your publication of, you know, notification of, to, to the residents?
Jack?
It, it would be a public hearing or a public notice-type presentation. The last time EIS was considered was with the CST project in two thousand and sixteen.
Okay.
And they were notified they would have to do an EIS before they could obtain any type of building permits. This was all public notice and public hearings held here at City Hall. So it's the formal process that we use for everything. We follow the public notice requirements that are given statutorily.
Well, I just, you know, I'm just looking for, I don't get a random egg from the city, so.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering if there was a local publication that you put your notice, notices in?
That, that would be the Anoka Union. It's our official paper of record. So if there's any legal notice of public hearings required, they're in that paper. And then we also put that information out on the website as far as our meetings go concerning that.
Okay.
And I'm pretty sure that, that also is required to be published in the Minnesota Register, which is a statewide publication. But we haven't had too many projects that have required it. It's usually a very sensitive land or a large, really large-scale project, which we just haven't had, so.
Thank you.
Yep. Anything else? Okay, well, thank you all for being here. This has been a good discussion, some new topics we haven't discussed in the past. As I mentioned before, we don't.